Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jennifer Rolkop?
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here. A motion for the approval of minutes from last meeting, June 30th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we need discussion? Jennifer Rolkop?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. We will move into the treasurer's report. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. For the month, we have bills, accounts payable, as well as financial reports, which include the board reports. Donations we received: $100 from the Legion for cheerleading, $100 from the Knights of Columbus for cheerleading, $100 from the Knights of Columbus for golf, and $50 from Mrs. Perkins for the Satora Perkins Scholarship Fund. We have one leftover transfer for fiscal year 15 from general fund to soccer for $222.80. Also, we'll be approving the four butts listed there for the 15-16 school year. It's also in your packet is the resolution to proceed with the renewal of the existing emergency levy that will be expiring. I have the appropriations for fiscal year 15, the final ones, to be approved, and the resolution accepting the tax amounts and rates for fiscal year 16 as follows.
Do you get a motion?
No.
Any motion?
We need a motion for the treasurer's report? Approval of the...
Not a vote.
Second. Any discussion, guys? Rolkop?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. Okay. Uh... Yeah, Mr. Botong, I think. Mr. Moore.
I wrote it down so that I could say it properly. I wanted to take a minute to thank Superintendent Mino for his input on the state budget on behalf of the Letonia School District and the schools in Columbia County. Under the Governor's and Senate's proposals, our school district would have received no additional funding. In fact, we would have lost money. However, Superintendent Mino was able to demonstrate that small rural school districts throughout the state were being systematically short-changed. Through his work and diligence, all Columbia County schools will now receive additional funding during the two years of this budget. Thank you, Mr. Mino.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We have a special guest with us that I like to recognize that really changed the finances from the beginning, and his work has been amazing, and that's Mr. Ginter, our representative for this area, the House of Representatives. I guess I get tired of me saying this to him, but every time I see him, I thank him for what he's done for education, for public education. And he burnt the midnight oil at night. He and I would be in communication with Representative Cupp and the leaders of those finance committees. Ten, eleven at night, I would get up the next morning, see my email. There'd be emails late at night from Representative Ginter that he would be there pushing the plan for rural and small districts. And I want to thank Representative Ginter for all he did. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I was going to say something, if I may.
I don't know if you're signed up?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
I've made the rules.
Okay.
The thing he isn't telling you, I may have burned the midnight oil, but I get up at noon every day. And so, not really, I do get up early in the morning. But I would like to say this, I guess I'm echoing what Dan has said, and I'd like to take this opportunity just to express, this sounds like a mutual admiration society, but I don't mean it to be that way. Superintendent Mino contacted me early on in the budget process, and it had, the executive proposal had just been released, and he was on top of that. And he began to do, he didn't just complain about it, and he didn't complain at all, but he began to investigate, and he began to open up a discourse with me about the budget. And it was evident that he not only had a passion for it and for his school, but also for the district and for education in general. And he began to delve into it, and I invited him, which he, I'm so thankful that he did. I invited him to participate, and I told him that I needed his help as a representative, and that I needed to understand the funding formula. And if I may, just real quickly tell you that Representative Bob Cupp's office is right next to mine, which I'm very thankful for, he's a former Supreme Court Justice. And he was, just happened to be the chair of K-12 Finance Subcommittee. And he was busy working on this budget. The timing couldn't have been any better for your superintendent to contact me. I actually remember getting up and going around the corner, "Superintendent, you know where his office is." And he was at his desk, and he happened to have all the budget papers laying out on his desk. And I said, "Representative Cupp," I said, "Can you explain the funding formula to me?" And his answer was like that. And we were trying to make heads or tails, and I said, "Well, I have a superintendent, and I talked to him about your superintendent, Mino." And I said, "He is willing to help us. He's going to do some studies, some research, and get some numbers back to us." He said, "I would welcome any help that I could get." And your superintendent was very thorough, he followed through, he crunched the numbers. He began to discover some anomalies, which turned out to be a pattern. And I'm not sure how much he shared with you, but what we discovered was that in the executive proposal, for some reason, there seemed to be the smaller schools and the rural schools. The smaller schools, 1,000 students and under, and the rural schools seem to be receiving the majority of the cuts, where the wealthier metropolitan schools seem to be receiving increases. And which was exactly opposite, as I had spoke to Director Keen from the Governor's Office about it, and had him in my office, he was trying to explain to me capacity. And I said, "Look, I know my schools, and what you're telling me about capacity, this formula is working exactly opposite." And Superintendent Mino's formula, or what he revealed, revealed this weakness in the formula. I took those numbers over to Representative Cupp, and he began to work on those. And I said, "Would you like the superintendent to testify?" And I approached him about testifying before the committee. And Superintendent Mino agreed to do that, he came and testified before the Subcommittee, did a fabulous job. Other superintendents and administrators, I apologize.
Oh.
Other superintendents and administrators began to come on board and began to confirm what the superintendent had said, what Superintendent Mino had said. And Representative Cupp, and I say all of this because, I tell you this, I am so proud of the fact that it was a superintendent from Letonia and our district that put tons of work into this and really made a difference in what all of the schools were benefits of. They benefited by the work. So, took a lot of, I appreciate his kind words about me, but I'm going to tell you what. I was a new kid on the block, and I was kind of the messenger boy. Representative Cupp did burn a lot of midnight oil and many others. And it takes a lot of horses to pull the size of the plow of the budget. And Superintendent Mino was willing to harness up and do his part in pulling, and we're thankful. And I'll tell you, Superintendent of the Wellsville School District called me, left the voicemail, and said it was the best budget that he has seen in 42 years. And for the first time, they can concentrate on teaching and instruction rather than just worrying about how they're going to meet the bills. So, that's my story, I'm sticking to it. I appreciate Superintendent doing his work. And if you don't mind, I apologize that I came in just like a politician, and I gave my spiel. I have to be at a meeting in Salem at 7:00. And so, thank you for giving me this opportunity, thank you for the work that you did.
Thank you. You're going to show me your way out of here.
Okay. Anybody else talking? I know they sent it. Ted, is, you, yes. I need my superintendent's report, but if you want to go now, that's fine.
That would be good.
Go ahead, yes.
I don't have any...
Let me do a little intro. Ted is from, I'm going to say we're going backwards again, Buregar...
Buregar.
Thank you. And they came to us about an energy program. We looked at quite a few of these. This one is no initial fees upfront, and it's more of a teaching how to use energy, not a light bulb or something that you actually insert or buy or purchase. So, thank you.
Very good. My name is Ted Holland, the manager of a division of Buregarret called the Green Apple Project. And I apologize, everybody has to kind of turn, but, and I have copied some of these slides. I, we spoke quite a bit with Rob and Gil, quite a bit of detail. I don't know if anybody else on the board had a chance to look at that. But the Green Apple Project is an energy conservation program, but it's a little bit different. We're not installing any new equipment. It's really a combination of a culture change and getting all our systems to be optimized. And it's really been around for a while, but it's taken on a lot of momentum in the last 10 years. Part of the reason why it's such a national movement is because solar and wind is still cost prohibitive. It's still about a 25-year payback, but yet there's a real desire to reduce energy and be sustainable because of that reduction in energy. So, where it got started was primarily on the West Coast, and now it's East Coast. And we've been actually doing this about eight years. But there's some 1,300 districts, primarily K-12 and higher education, that are involved in this program. As I mentioned, it's a combination of behavior science and system optimization. We would think that, and my guess is, some of us here are parents, it's like, just because it's the right thing to do to turn off the lights, that doesn't mean that that's what actually happens. There's a lot of behavior science around, how do you actually change your culture? How do you change that mindset to engage where we can engage in systems? And then, the system optimization is much more of an engineering, behind-the-scenes kind of part of it. But as Rob mentioned, there's no cost to it. And we really look at those no-cost things, and I say low-cost, sometimes we'll, in our evaluation, we'll see maybe a piece of equipment that needs some repair. So, you know, that would be something that would need repair anyway, but that would be considered like a low-cost thing. So, there's no capital investment. We bring in the engineering, and if you save, we get a share of the savings. That's how we get paid. So, we do a preliminary analysis of what your energy use index is. And even though you have a newer school, it's still pretty high. And that's not unusual, we see that a lot. Brand-new schools, they're still consuming higher-than-normal energy. And, I mean, this is a study that would say that if we actually get all our systems and everybody's engaged properly, we can save in the range of 20% to 30%. We average 22%, about the same as if you were putting in new lights and new equipment, which is, I think, kind of mystifying to some people, but that's been our experience. We have people actually engaged, we save maybe more than brand-new systems. We looked at your utility, you're spending about $152,000 currently. We estimate based on past performance that you can probably save in the neighborhood of $33,000, which would reduce your utility down to about $118,000. This is where it comes in, where we share in it. There's a portion of the savings go towards what we call a neutral cost, which we hire an energy coach, that actually is usually somebody already within the district who pays stipend to work second shift around the weekends to encourage people to engage. And we spend a lot of time training them, so they're technically sound as well. We're always looking for kind of a charismatic guy that's already a leader. We can train him on the technical part, but, so that might be something that you'd be thinking about, who might be that right person? And usually, we get several people that you kind of nominate, and then we kind of co-interview them and select that person, and then we pay them out of the savings. Over the 15-year period, or a five-year period, which that's what the program is, we perceive saving about $80,000. Over a 15-year period, $478,000. That energy coach, we pay that person, we call it neutral. We don't really care who pays that person, but you need leadership. So, either we pay it or the school pays it, really depends on what's best for the school. We have to work with some districts where they hire the energy coach because it affects their retirement. In other cases, you know, there's just no additional dollars, so they want us to pay them directly. So, we don't really care, but that's what we call a neutral cost. And then there's some software, if it's third-party, it's not a Buregarret thing. It just helps determine what the energy savings that be able to take in effective, is it a cold winter or a mild winter and those kind of things? There's really three components of the program. There's the know-how, there's leadership, and then a process. The know-how comes, this is what Buregarret supplies, is all the engineering talents, and you know, whether it's mechanical, electrical, energy, control engineering, this is what will come in and do a detailed evaluation over the length of the program to find different ways that we can save. Recognizing the primary mission of a school is to educate students. So, we have to maintain comfort and proper airflow and all those things, but there's still other opportunities where we can kind of squeeze down how our systems are working and still maintain comfort. The leadership really comes from three different spots. Primary, or to begin with, it's a high-level leadership, whether it's the board level or the superintendent to say, "Hey, we're behind this program. We want to save energy, we want to be sustainable." Because quite honestly, everybody else looks at them and says, "Well, if they're not into it, why should I be into it?" The energy coach is that person that kind of grabs that flag and gives monthly reports and quite a bit of feedback, because that's important. And the whole strategy is, it's one thing to save energy, but if you don't think what you're doing is important, it kind of falls away pretty quickly. So, we need that kind of leadership. And then the program coordinator is on the Buregarret side. We pay that person, they're involved with you on a regular basis, doing training and support. The last is the process. This is something we've developed over eight years. It's part of like, how do you change a culture? And I'm not going to go into that, it's a couple-day class, honestly, so. But just at a high level, you know, one of the things is having a vision and a theme. I kind of just gave an idea with a bear pride, you know, I saw that, I liked that, that kind of fits in. And part of your mission included dedicated citizens, and then I just kind of added, "for a sustainable future." That's just an idea. This would be something we would work with you to kind of have a theme to kind of build around. Here's some other ones that we've had, from the Green Defender to Saving the Fuller Bear, which actually didn't go over so well. Students loved it, but was, didn't always go over well with the adults. But, or the green virus catched it. But, so anyway, that's just one of the steps. And lastly, you know, there's educational resources. Recognizing you already have a full curriculum, you know, so it's got to be, most likely, the teacher that wants some seat time or wants to take on, maybe they have a passion for doing, maybe problem-based learning or those kind of things, where they can learn math, science, English within the project or problem of energy conservation. We have four different programs. The Green Defender happens to be for primary school. Energy Savings Patrol is the elementary school. The Green Storm is middle school, and Sea Conservation is the high school. And each one is, was been developed with teachers here in Ohio to kind of fit in with being age-appropriate. I just mentioned, that is kind of a bonus to the whole program. You don't have to do that to save, but long-term, it's not changing our minds on how to save, it's kind of the grassroots of a student-up kind of thing. And then, just to kind of finish up, if this is something you're interested in, I certainly can give way more detail to all that. I was kind of like, 10 minutes is what I got, and don't want to get the hook. But, yeah, if that's something you're interested in, again, I can give you way more detail of it. But that's kind of the long and short of it. Our next step would be board approval and a contract. And then we'd select an energy coach, then we'd bring our team in to work with your team to find all these different opportunities. And then implementation, and then there's ongoing feedback and support. I know, I just, it's like drinking out of a fire hose there, but I was trying to get it in 10 minutes, so. Any questions or thoughts or...
There's, what's the cost of the school?
Zero.
None?
Zero.
All right. On your savings projection and your shared savings for slides?
Yes.
Your estimated savings was $33,000 a year. Your five-year projection was $80,000, but your 15-year was $480,000.
Yes.
How's it going to jump, how does it jump $400,000 in the last 10 and a dozen in the first five?
Great question, because we share the savings for the first five years.
Okay.
You know, after that, we strongly encourage you maintaining, paying an energy coach. But throughout the 15-year program, partly because we just know that if you don't have somebody to grab the flag and be that ongoing, it just kind of falls away. So, that's why the math isn't just times five or times three or whatever. It's because there's, half the cost goes away. Does that make sense?
Without spending too much time, the philosophy sounds wonderful. Can you just like, maybe dabble a little bit in the technical? I'm just curious, I mean, because of course, in my mind, I'm thinking HVAC or something like that, but to have a half-million savings or $400,000, what is the savings in 15 years? Can you guide me down a little bit?
Absolutely. There's about 200 things that we look at. It could range from just sitting in here, you know, it's like those blinds, you know, you have radiant load. If this room isn't occupied, we should have all those closed all summer long to reduce the cooling load. Getting the right light levels. The kitchen is a big thing. And, you know, many kitchens will come in, and the first thing they do in the morning is flip on exhaust fans and start to crank up the ovens. And it used to require that, it took a while for the ovens to balance on temperature. Modern ovens aren't that wet. Can we push through a full racks of dish, through our dishwasher versus half racks? So, some of it's just a educational procedure. When we look at HVAC, there's things that were kind of mandated through the high design manual, including using heat wheels. Almost all of them are not working properly. It's, and partly because, you know, the folks that are working in facilities, that's, you know, that state-of-the-art stuff, that's usually not where they're strong at. So, we work with them to get all those systems working properly. I can keep going if you want.
Out of curiosity, because you've obviously done this before in the past, do you usually make the mark, or are you sometimes a little above the mark, a little below the mark? Where have you been in the past?
We average 22%. So, that number, you know, we kind of cap it at 22%. You're actually, you know, honestly, I do so many schools, I can't remember exactly what your percentage is, but we kind of cap it at 22. That's what our average is, sometimes it's a little bit less, sometimes it's a little bit more. But the fact that it isn't some, you didn't have to have any kind of capital outlay. Even if it's a little short, it's not painful.
And what schools, I think you talked to me about this, what schools do you do?
I think I have a slide here, because I thought you might ask, but. So, the closest one to you right here is Kent State, Salem. But there's, I don't know, there's those and many more. Paulding, Fairview, East Liverpool, Evergreen, Eastwood.
Those are yearly or total?
That is yearly.
Ted, Joe has a question.
I was going to ask, if he has case testimonials?
Yes.
That we could contact.
Absolutely.
My second question would be, are you paid on a flat rate or is it a percentage?
We just share the savings. So, if the savings, if you get zero savings, we don't get paid at all. If you get more savings, we get a percentage of that.
Okay, so it is a percentage.
Yeah. So, again, if we don't hit the savings, it's not like you paid some dollar amount and like, oh, well, we didn't get it. It's like, no, we're, I mean, we're in it, obviously, we're both in it, to try to save energy because we both share in it. It's part of the motivation.
And we can contact any of those schools?
Sure. I, if, you know, Rob, I can give you the...
The work contact.
Sure.
Those schools.
Yep.
I took it from that contact, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. I wasn't sure if David, my partner, had sent that out to you already or not.
I believe that they did, I will share that, because, so, we'll get people, sometimes, like, with the windmills, they came in and they had no school that was using it.
Yeah.
I knew you guys had a little bit of a history of working with schools.
Yeah. We do a lot with schools, I mean, we're probably the largest. You know, this just happens to be one program, but we do energy-related things. And, you know, this happens to be one that's very hot because there is no cost and no risk, you know, so. If it doesn't work, it's not like you spend, you know, I guess there is some risk as you spend a little time with us, you know. Time is important, certainly, but no financial risk.
You got to check, you'll check some of that?
Yeah. I'm going to follow through, I'll check some of the schools and share them.
This may not be a fair question, but what would you say contributes the most to the savings when you compare schools there? Why would one school get $7,000 but another one? Size.
320?
Size. You know, some of it has to do, and we look at it, not every school qualifies, because we're investing quite a bit of time and money, engineering on our part. You know, we look at your utilities, and if they were already, you know, low, we would back away and say, you know, "You're doing a great job." But that's, that doesn't happen that often. As far as weighing out, usually half the savings are HVAC-related, the other half is everything else.
What percent of the savings do you take? If we're sharing the savings, what percent do you take?
Well, we have the neutral cost first, and then we split it. The neutral cost, again, it doesn't, it doesn't, we don't care who pays the neutral cost. Most of the time, we do. Just because school districts are already very lean and don't have any additional dollars. So, usually, we pay that, and then after that, we split it.
Split it 50/50?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Very much for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If you think anything, my cards were there, I'll leave some cards here if anybody here would like to...
And I'll be in touch.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to hear from Kent, I appreciate that.
We'll be moving into new business?
New business, I'm going to do seven, eight, one, two, and three together. Approve the following for a, for the school year, those are supplemental mentor teacher, OGT tutor, and band volunteer. Also, coaches for the fall and spring season, volleyball, track, and cheerleading. And then three, employ the following title tutors, Brandon, Fran, Chelsea, Sarah, Catherine, Corbett, Davis, and Andrew Morrow.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. The, like I said, the, the coaches on that list, they are working on their pass right now. The head coach has it though, and we discussed before, and, but they will have it before the start of the season. So, I'll see what you think.
Brandon Fran, is that my?
That's my, yeah.
Certificate, are certificates everything being allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer Rolkop?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
I'm going to do four and five together, two resignations. Number four is the resignation of Kurt Jennings, a board member, effective July 23rd, 2014.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you. And five is the resignation of Arlene DeVivo, effective July 17th, 2015.
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. DeVivo was our Spanish teacher we approved at the last meeting. She has taken, designed to take a job elsewhere.
Jennifer Rolkop?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Six and seven, I'll do together, employ the following teachers under one-year contract for the 2015-2016 school year. Leanna Jaeger, language arts, Leanna Hudson, Spanish, and approve Mary Race for five extended days prior to the start of the 2015-2016 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
How's a one-year contract work? Is it a set salary?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the scale of the...
And I thought that we already, I thought we had a...
We did 10 before and 10 after.
I thought we already did 10 before, and now you're doing another five.
The 10 was after. 10 was after the school year. We did 10 after.
Oh.
We usually do 10 before, but she doesn't need 10. We've streamlined that a little bit.
Okay.
With Mr. Reddinsky doing a lot more of the scheduling, so we streamlined that.
Jennifer, roll call?
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Leanna is here today. Leanna is pulling Roger like Mr. Rowley. Leanna, welcome aboard and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
She comes from Youngstown, or no, I'm sorry, Teal College, where she played varsity basketball and varsity volleyball at Teal, and is willing to do some coaching here for us. Fortunately, she already got, before the season started last year, championed to do volleyball, but we've discussed a little bit about basketball already, and so she's sort of here. Mrs. Hudson here as well. This hasn't taught at Salem for years. She stepping in and I'm sure she'll be a fixture here. I know that my mother owned a beauty shop for years in Salem, many years in Salem. And she, Mrs. Hudson, used to run the senior prom. And my mother would get so excited because all the ladies would come in, and I know that, that they'd come down there the day before the prom. Pretty much what you did is you, after the prom, you just took the props and just had the seniors in that Saturday, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So it was good for business?
Good for business. Yeah, it was. Yeah, thank you. You helped me put me through college. The, but the, and I know we talked about doing some things like that here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's awesome.
It is. I'll do students B1 and 2 together. Welcome aboard, too, Mrs. Hudson. I'm sorry, I didn't. With that. Approve the 2015-2016 elementary handbook and the 2015-2016 middle high school handbook.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
You had a committee meeting?
Yes, thank you. We had a committee meeting. We made four changes, I believe it was. One was with progressive discipline. One change with the ACT for tiebreaker for valedictorian to, that the, that the valedictorian would be by grade point average, however, if they had the same grade point average, the highest ACT score would.
I like it.
To get final first position.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and that's, that was about it.
What do you do if it'd be unlikely that a valedictorian wouldn't, or what happens if a valedictorian, doesn't he take the ACT to progress?
Yeah, and then if they, then it comes out of a tie, then the ones with the highest score would.
But if they don't take it? If you go into the military, you wouldn't have to take it.
I would, I would assume that, that didn't come up in the discussion, I would assume.
I think that's what he was going to.
Is that what you're going to say?
Yeah, it crossed my mind, but.
I think we flip a coin then, right?
Probably approach it on case by case.
Case by case, I'd say that, okay.
There's not a third tiebreaker, is there? Two of them get the same ACT score?
No.
No, Joe Coe.
Joe Coe, yeah.
Because ACT is only 1 through 36.
Right. Roll call?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Three, or I'm sorry, seven C, three and four together, the following substitute bus drivers for the 2015-16 school year, as well as the substitute custodians that are listed.
Motion.
Michael. Second.
Roll.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Business operations D1, as well as use of facilities D1, 2, and 3, together.
I'll start the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to explain that. I went kind of quick. Our advertisers receive bus purchases. I don't believe we're going to purchase a bus, but we have to get in that consortium.
Yes, we might be term next year, but we have to start the process now.
Well, and this should flex back onto the rotation that we're trying to build up with pretty much the whole district.
Right.
So we have a standard that the district will be kept to a standard, so.
Two buses.
Well, buses, I think, not, not more than 10 years.
10 years to go.
Yes, I think by 2019, we'll have all new buses, safe buses, stuff to propel us into the future. And so when one gets to 10, 11 years old, we'll have a new one on the line without hitting the district with all new buses immediately, so.
How old's the current oldest bus?
What's, I think, right now is?
14?
I thought 17.
I think 97, somewhat 18.
18, yeah.
Thus the new program.
We have two new ones. Two new ones within the last five years.
Yeah.
We have rent five buses in the stairs, so. Been doing a good job getting that started. And then the use of facilities are the nutrition group, the little bears, and Mrs. Stelter who did CPR for are coaches, which we appreciate her doing.
Roll call?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to the superintendent's report?
I have yours, Rob. Did you want the sheet back?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Sorry, I carried it up.
That's okay, that's fine. Actually, all I, the only other thing I have is superintendent's report was, we had two representatives at Buckeyes Boy State, Quentin Walters and Seth Whitmore. And Dr. Seth, he gave us some information about it. He actually ran for the House of Representatives and won the election 57 to 3 out of 1,300 young men at Boy State. And so he was awarded the American Legion Outstanding Citizen Award, and that goes to the young man who demonstrates the outstanding leadership and great skills. And Seth also won recently the West Point Leadership Award from the West Point Society of Cleveland. So I know Wes, or Seth has been working hard all summer, academic the NFL, at least spent some time at Boy State this year, and did a good job, and Quentin as well, representing the school.
Okay. For myself, I want to thank Representative Tim Gaitner for coming. If you really know what went on, him and Rob went way beyond the call of duty. Anyone that has, all of us for their business lives, is very saturating. And you're saturated to the point where you're just trying to get through the day. So for someone to bring in a brand-new subject or put in your foreground, say, do something with it, normally that doesn't happen, because you're trying to get through your day and just survive. And these two guys had this tremendous task to be put in front of them. I was on the sidelines, you know, with them when they were doing this and getting emails and phone calls on it. And you finally had these districts like ourselves, that were becoming a role model in Columbian County, so people realize, follow us about being fiscal responsible, about being responsible taking care of your teachers. You know, the teachers for two contracts took it on the chin, and then when we had it, we returned the favor. That's what we operate as a district together. And Tim Gaitner is a friend of the district. He's a friend of teachers, he's a friend of students, and these two guys together, there's a lot of us districts that are rural throughout Ohio. And you have Cleveland and Toledo's and the Youngstown's that really aren't that fiscal responsible like we are. And it's wonderful to see Columbus reward us, you know, with our good stewardship. So thank you to those two guys. I also wanted to discuss the resignation of Kurt Jennings and thank him for all his service that he gave us. Tremendous friend, wonderful human being. But now we're going to move on. And we are going to start accepting applications for the position of the Board of Education on July 24, and we will take those until August 7, 2015. So everyone would be welcome to submit an application if they're interested in that.
This is a letter of interest.
A letter of interest that you would send to the district right here in the.